Everybody, so we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Heyman.
Present.
Mr. Gorman.
Present.
Mayor Bruin is absent. He'll be a slight late, so there's four of you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
We're gonna go ahead and vote on the slide, please. Oh, yep, he gave you your... So please vote.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, I moved to approve.
Thank you, I apologize.
I have a more... Motion and second. Please vote.
I got ahead of myself. Sorry, Solomon. Four eyes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, next item, public comment on closed session. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session. And now let's go into the closed session.
For the record, the closed session will be on potential litigation under government code 54959.9C, one case.
All right, we'll be back after the closed session. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back. We are coming out of our closed session. I will go ahead and begin by opening our regular session if I can ask everyone to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And Captain Tucker, where are you at? You're leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can have you please remain standing for our invocation, Councilman Rajaratnam.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Lord, as we are in the month of September, and as we remember the fallen due to the terrorist attacks, Lord, we ask you for your protection for our country, Lord. Lord, we have seen how high buildings can collapse all of a sudden, and how lives can end in minutes, Lord. I ask you to give your strength so that we can face the situation, face these memories of these terrorist attacks, and the changes it has brought in our lives, Lord. Lord, thank you for the bravery and for the sacrifice done by so many people during that time, Lord. The first responders, the firefighters, the common man, the crew, and also the people on United 93. Lord, give your comfort and strength to the families and friends who have lost their dear ones. Lord, give your healing and your patience to the survivors but who suffer with the pain, both physically and psychologically, Lord. Lord, teach us to be patriotic, but more so humbly. Lord, teach us to see the value of life in the light of these terrorist attacks, Lord. Lord, on that day, everybody helped each other with open doors, open arms, and open hearts. Lord, let not we forget that on that day, we did not care for the nationality, Lord, we did not care for the race, or the wealth, or education, but we solely focused on the humanity and the love for our fellow Americans. Lord, give us that love. Let us continue to spread that love. And, Lord, give us your hope during uncertain times, and give us your peace to all of us at all the times, Lord. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is our attorney report out of closed session.
Thank you, number one. Mayor, council member, one item was considered by the council in closed session. No reportable actions were taken.
Thank you, sir. If I can ask Captain Tucker to join the council at the podium. We have some presentations to make.
As you can know, I'm not Captain Tucker. I'm a little bit taller than he is. Can I have Officer Henderson and Officer Solo up here with me? Yeah. Don't get the hide it round in the back. Up in front. You ready? So Officer Henderson and Officer Solo were working my shift, and I was the watch commander when they were dispatched to call. And this happened on May 7th. Officer Henderson was a training carer with Officer Solo, who was a brand-new officer. They were dispatched to a call in the 500 block of Atkins regarding possibly a subject stalking an ex-girlfriend. They arrived on scene, initially didn't hear anything. And what struck me about this is that they went beyond what is normally required, and they actually parked the vehicle and got out and started to look on foot for this individual. Went through the trailer park and heard some noise in the back, and they investigated. And they found this young man in the backyard, and he was up in the tree, and he was in the process of fixing to be his last evening with us here on Earth. And these officers were able to talk him out of the tree, got him to come down, surrender peacefully, talked with them, get him some help, and ended up taking him to our community center for people that are dealing with mental issues. Obviously, this young man was having a lot on his mind, and no doubt in my mind, had not these officers went beyond and looked for this young man, that this would have played out very differently, and he still not would be this. So from that, they're being recognized as life-saving awards on behalf of the police department. All right, I'm Captain Tucker. Can I get Sergeant Nathan Lloyd to stay up here, Detective Brianna Stangle, and Officer Michael Ogas to join me up here, please? Did Ogas clear that call yet?
No, he's still looking for the juvenile, so.
Okay, he's way out there. All right, well, we'll proceed without Officer Ogas. All right, on June 5th, 2023, officers were dispatched to an incident involving the unresponsive 13-year-old girl who had overdosed. Upon their arrival, officers assessed the severity of the situation and immediately spring into action. Officer Brianna Stangle promptly initiated CPR on the unresponsive girl, while Sergeant Nathan Lloyd and Officer Michael Ogas administered Narcan and conducted rescue breaths. Their coordinated efforts were instrumental in reviving the victim and stabilizing her condition until additional medical assistance arrived. The actions demonstrated by Sergeant Lloyd, Officer Stangle, and Officer Ogas exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement professionalism and serve as an inspiration to their colleagues, as well as to the community they serve. Their quick thinking, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to public safety played a pivotal role in ensuring a positive outcome in a critical situation. Sergeant Lloyd, Officer Stangle, and Officer Ogas are to be commended for their quick response, effective teamwork, and proficiency in life-saving techniques, which undoubtedly contributed to saving the life of this young girl. For their actions, they're being awarded the Life Saving Award from the Ridgecrest Police Department. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right. We get Officer James Kuros to come up, please. All right. On May 9th, 2023, Officer James Kuros was dispatched to a traffic collision at the Del Taco drive-thru on North Norma Street in the city of Ridgecrest. Upon his arrival, he walked up to the first vehicle and attempted to make contact with the driver. As he attempted to contact the driver, he noticed the driver was unconscious, unresponsive, and slumped over in the driver's seat. Officer Kuros swiftly took action by extracting the subject from the vehicle and securing it in a parked position. He then conducted a thorough assessment of the subject's condition and ascertained that he was not breathing, lacked a pulse, and potentially experiencing an overdose. Officer Kuros administered Narcan, leading to the subject regaining consciousness and ultimately preserving his life. Officer Kuros is to be commended for his efforts during this intense situation. His quick response, along with his dedication to ensure safety of this individual, contributed to saving the life of the subject. For his actions, he's being awarded the Life Saving Award from the Ridgecrest Police Department. Let's give him a big round of applause. We've got a lot of these, so. Can I get Officer Gabriel Coe and Officer Ryan Smith to join me up here, please? All right. On July 5th, 2023, officers were dispatched to a call of a female overdosing. The reporting party stated that the female had been given two shots of Narcan, however was not alert or breathing, and had possibly overdosed. Upon arrival, Officer Ryan Smith and Officer Gabriel Coe immediately began CPR. Sergeant Laura Kenny arrived on scene and administered one dose of Narcan. By the time Liberty ambulance arrived, the female was conscious and alert. The patient was reluctant to seek additional treatment, even with the urging of the paramedics. However, Sergeant Kenny was able to convince the female that she should get checked, and she agreed to be transported to the Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. Sergeant Kenny, Officer Smith, and Officer Coe are to be commended for their quick actions and life-saving efforts to ensure the safety of this individual, which saved the victim's life. For that, they're being awarded the Ridgecrest Police Department Life Saving Award. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right, could I have Officer Smith come back down here, please? And Officer Michael Petit, please, join us down here. All right. On August 11th, 2023, officers were dispatched to a call of a male not breathing and overdosing. Upon arrival, Officer Ryan Smith, Officer Michael Petit located the male not breathing, unresponsive, and had no pulse. Officer Smith and Officer Pettit immediately began CPR. Officer Pettit administered one dose of Narcan. However, the male was still unresponsive and had no pulse. Officer Smith administered an additional dose of Narcan, which was effective, and they were able to detect a pulse from the male. Both officers continued life-saving measures until Liberty ambulance arrived on scene and transported the male to the Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, where he made a full recovery. Officer Smith and Officer Pettit are to be commended for their quick actions and life-saving efforts to ensure the safety of this individual, which saved the victim's life. For their actions, they're being awarded the Ridgecrest Police Department Life Saving Award. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right. Last but not least, can we have Officer Robert Henderson come back down, and Officer Jeremiah Lloyd, please? All right. On August 12th, 2023, officers responded to a report of a male who was non-responsive on West Graff Street. The reporting party advised dispatch that small children had approached their home and told them their father was lying on the floor in their garage. The reporting party then found the male lying on the floor in the garage. Officer Jeremiah Lloyd, Officer Robert Henderson, and Sergeant Eric Hallmark responded and located him with a weak pulse that was slowly stopping. Officer Henderson noticed a suspected substance that would be the cause of an overdose, at which time Officer Lloyd applied Narcan to the male. Officers continued to provide aid and directed medical aid into the building. Prior to medical aid arriving, officers were able to get his pulse back, and he regained consciousness. Sergeant Hallmark, Officer Lloyd, and Officer Henderson are to be commended for their efforts during this intense and stressful situation. Their quick thinking and actions, along with their dedication to ensure safety of this individual, resulted in preserving the life of the subject. For their actions, they're being commended with the Ridgecrest Police Department Life Saving Award. Let's give them a big round of applause.
If I can ask all these, if I can ask all the our incredible officers and our life-saving officers to join us up front for a photo, we'd appreciate it. Okay, officers up front. All patients from the back.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna take a whole picture, and then we're gonna do first officers. Because usually... I'd like to all the... You guys are gonna like each other a whole lot.
Yes, need to be...
Is that for you? Did you want to sit here? One more, everybody?
Okay, before these gentlemen leave, can I add, these ladies and gentlemen, both, please, can I ask everyone just a round of applause for their efforts? I'm gonna give everybody a moment for the families that are here to disperse before we begin regularly again. Okay, we'll get back to our regularly scheduled program once again. Our deep appreciation to all of our incredible officers and RPD. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. And to the families, thank you for supporting them. We greatly appreciate it. Our next item on our agenda is we have a presentation from Frontier in regards to the fiber optic installation. City Manager Strand.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I have Doug McAllister here from Frontier. He's their Vice President of Internal Affairs. As you know, for the last several months, Frontier has been building out their fiber optic lines throughout town, and he's here tonight to talk a little bit about their new product that they have in town. It's all yours, Doug.
Thank you, thank you, Ron. My name is Doug McAllister. I'm the Vice President of External Affairs. I try to stay away from Internal Affairs as much as I possibly can. And I appreciate you all making the time for me to have this presentation. My goal is to make this extremely brief. I have sat on your side the days for many years. I was the mayor of Murrieta, and I have enjoyed many presentations, and I not necessarily always really enjoy them. And so I want to keep this as brief as possible and leave time for you to ask any questions you might have as well. Before I jump into that, at the risk of making this go longer, I want to commend you on your police department. In Murrieta, we had our own municipal police department as well. And it was one of the reasons that we were known as one of the safest cities in the United States of over 100,000. It has been my experience that when you have your own police department, they live there, they work there, they're the coaches, they're there, the stores, they go to church with you, they do all of those things. This is their city, and it really contributes to what we saw tonight. I used to like to have the presentations on my City Council meetings for this because the nights we had all the police there, I felt very, very safe, and it was always enjoyable for that as well. But let me jump into the presentation, and I'm the one doing this, so. I went the wrong way? There we go. Frontier is in the midst of a nationwide, full-on build-out of fiber optic. I'm not gonna read these. These, you can read them in the journalizer, but basically it's a fiber optic build for telecommunications, for internet, huge pipelines. And what we're gonna talk about tonight is about that build, which is very, very far along in your city. Most of the times I talk, I'm usually doing these presentations for city councils before we start the build. We're past that, we're past all of that. We're gonna talk about after the construction, and I was here with Ron, what, a month ago or so, falling on my sword, apologizing, and all kinds of things that way because of the, we had some hiccups with our contractors, one of which just went bankrupt and left, and left everything there, and then we had to try to catch up with that and try to get caught up. And we're gonna talk about that. I'm here to answer questions about that as well, if you have any as well. But the whole thing tonight is about after construction and the cleanup and the fiber installation as well. When it comes to fiber, just so you know, and let me tell you why I'm giving you these details. One of the things I used to hate when I was in office, and I hated with a passion, was walking into church, walking into a school, walking into a city event, or City Hall, or whatever else, being approached by a constituent and being landblasted. And I would have to say, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about. And then it kind of got worse after that. If I would go to my city manager and say, who do we talk to to get the answers this citizen needs, and the answer is, we don't know. And so one of the reasons, and the primary, frankly, the reason I'm here tonight, is to introduce myself to you. I am the Vice President of the company. My focus is External Affairs. Primarily, my focus is to work with your city manager and you. I am your senior executive point of contact for all things Frontier. If anything is to go and rise to the level of your attention, I don't care how small it is, you know, most of the time, your staff and my staff will get along just fine, most of the time. But there are times when things don't get done right, or you have a question from a constituent, and you need to get the answer to that constituent. I don't care how small the question is, don't even take the second breath. My phone number, Ron has my phone number, either have Ron call me, email me, text me, or you could do that yourselves directly, so I can be made aware of the question and I can take care of it. It is my job to do that, not yours. It's not your job to have to fix Frontier for that customer. Sometimes the questions are simple, sometimes not so much. But my purpose here is to give you some information, should they ask you some questions, and so you'll have that information, so you won't have to say, like I used to have to say many times, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about. So let's get back into that as well. The fiber itself, what we're building is 100% fiber directly to each home. This is not a copper-fiber hybrid. It's full-on fiber, which is going to explain why we have a whole lot of things I'm gonna talk about here tonight. One of the things that we're able to do, because it's fiber, it's very, very robust internet pipeline, and so it eliminates the choke places. For instance, I read a study about a year ago that said that the average household has about 22 devices, literally, in their homes, which I didn't frankly believe. And so I got to thinking, I saw, my house, it's me, my wife, and my cat. Pretty sure the cat is non, I don't know what the cat's doing when I'm not home, but, you know, we started doing account of the devices we have in our house, just the two and a half of us. And it was 13 at that point. I have three computers on my desk, my wife has one, and then we have our TVs and phones and all that kind of stuff. The problem with that, with normal internet connections, is that the more devices, the slower it goes. That is not the case with what we're bringing to your city. And we're gonna talk a little bit about what that means later on. Part of the issue here is that, because it's fiber, because of what we're doing, we are able to provide up to five gigs of speed up and down. Not five down and three up, or whatever. This is five up and down, symmetrical. So it's a massive, massive pipeline in that, and maybe through the question-answer process, I can explain why that makes a difference. The rest of those, we'll just leave for later. This is how we'll do it. I'm not gonna go through all of that. The bottom line here is, is that if we have existing conduit, we would have gone into that. If we have, if we're already in the air, we would have stayed in the air and overlashed there. Sometimes we have to bore, and that's where the problems come with regard to hitting other things, and we get that going. But at the end of the day, it goes all the way from, and I'm gonna show you a picture here, from my left, I don't know how it looks on your screen, that's representing our wire center, and then it took a couple of steps to get to the side of the house, and it's full-on fiber, which is what allows us the speed, and it's one and done. us the speed. And it's one and done. We don't have, right now, when I first started about a year ago, a year and a half ago with Frontier when they recruited me, the top speed was two gigs. And at some point, I said, you know, you realize that's gonna be so yesterday. I don't know what you do with two gigs, but somebody's gonna say, I need more. And sure enough, about, I don't know, six months ago or so, it turned into five gigs. And all they had to do is change some lights in the wire center. We don't have to come back out and do any more construction after that. It's a very one-and-done, future-proof technology. Here's where we are right now. There's about almost 11,000 addresses that have been engineered in your city that we're going to be doing. And let me just clarify that this build is fiber-to-the-home. This is for folks in their residences. We've done about 5,000 of them, and for the, and we're gonna, for the balance of 2023, we're gonna be doing another 500 addresses. That leaves about 5,000 addresses that we still need to do in your city. And that, we, our plan is, we don't have the dates and things like that set yet because they're still planning the build for 2024. But our goal is to have all the rest of those 5,000 addresses done next year. So right now, hopefully by the end of 2024, what you'll find here is your entire city, anything in that pink area, your entire city will have the option to use our fiber if they so choose. It's inexpensive. I don't wanna leave that very long because it looks like a commercial, but you'll kinda see what that is. And I just wanna explain why. The reason that is as expensive it is, is we've divorced ourselves from network TV. Meaning typically what happens there is you have your fiber or your internet connection, and then you buy that, and you bundle it with, you got your TV, where there's 6,000 channels where you watch six of them and things like that. And that is what the cost is at this point. Well, most folks, myself included, are now streaming. And so what we are providing is a massive, massive pipeline of internet connectivity. And then you decide what you wanna put through it. But the beauty of it is, the buffering's gone, you don't have the issue of choke points and things like that. And so those kinds of issues there are dealt with because the pipeline's so big. Back in 2004, I believe it was, Verizon came to me, I was mayor, and they pitched to me that they wanted Murrieta to be one of the first cities in the nation to have this new thing called FiOS. And I believe right then, I think the fastest speed was 50 megs. And I had been in the process of trying to figure out how to create and provide a broadband backbone for my city. We had everything else for economic development. I know you guys look at that, trying to figure out, how do you do economic development? What do you have to do? So we had everything else, but we didn't have the broadband backbone at that point. The other thing we didn't have was a brine line, but we weren't looking for that kind of manufacturing. So I needed a broadband backbone. And I figured out how to do it. And I only needed $400 million, which wasn't gonna happen at that point. So during that process, when they came to me, I was hearing blah, 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 free. And my thing was, when can you start? Hey, let's do the whole city at once. That was a mistake. They started pretty quickly, but doing the whole city at once was, you could have flown a plane over our city that's under construction. It was everywhere. And so that was part of tonight's discussion as well, is the construction can be painful, especially when we have a contractor go belly up and we have to catch up with that. Those times can be painful. But what we got at the end in Murrieta was we went from, when I first got elected, it was like 35,000 people. Within four years, I think it was, over 100,000 people. It grew way too fast. But because we had the broadband backbone at that point, we went from a bedroom community to a biotech community in that period of time, with hospitals coming in and things like that. So I would encourage you, as much as you feel comfortable, to look at this as an economic development driver, especially now after COVID, with so many folks who are working from home. Now they have the option to probably have better internet speeds in their homes than they have in their offices when you get five gigs. So those are the options there as well. So that's why the prices are so cheap. You just, you have, whatever speed you pick, then you add whatever you want to it when it comes to the streaming side, and just enjoy a really flawless presentation. I have this slide here, it's the Affordable Connectivity Program. What this is, is we work with the government for those folks who can't afford connectivity. And so, you know, they go online, they can call that number, and so we can get them connected so that, you know, they can potentially get it for free, if they qualify for that. So there's just a few things to go through to get that to happen. Things we like to do in construction, and I really hope they did, basically, there's construction notices to go out, there's direct mails, there's door knockers, there's yard signs, all kinds of things like that. The idea here is, is that we want to let them know we're coming. We wanted to let them know that we were coming at that point. And from what I'm hearing, by the time it escalated up to me, is that we were okay with that. And so we could have been better. But what happens, and this is one of those times you might get pinged, is that when I go in and out of my house at home, I go in through the garage, just drive in, open garage door, drive in, close garage door. I never use the front door except for two things. One is to harvest the door hangers over a period of time. And the second one is, can you guess? My wife's Amazon packages. Those are the only two reasons I do, I go to the front door. And so many times I'm harvesting those door hangers, I don't look at them. And so somewhat notified me of something I don't know about. Well, that'll happen, and that has probably happened here as well. In my view, if a constituent were to call you and say, what's going on in my front yard? No one told me about this. And even though I may no one have pictures of a door hanger on their door, in my view, they were not notified. And so I need to know about that, so that I can get someone out there to talk to them as soon as possible. So here's some examples of those door hangers in different languages, and letters that go out, and yard signs. Once we are built, and right now in your city, there should be folks who should be able to do this now, is go online, put their address in, and find out if they're open for sale at their address. That's how they can do that. They could do it online, or they could do it if they wanted to download the app. I don't know how far along that was, but that's it. I wanna leave time for questions for you folks, so that's what this time is now for.
Well, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and ask if there's any council questions. We'll go right to left. Skip, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes. My friend, I didn't catch your first name.
Doug.
Doug, welcome to Ridgecrest.
Love it here. Been here several times.
Thank you. I think the community just went through about of hanging cable wire all over the place. This fiber optic will be in addition to what's already out there?
For the rest of the build, yes. The coils that were hanging and things, we got those taken care of, and we're still working on those. There's one street, I believe, that we still have to wait, we're getting, waiting for the asphalt to come in and do the final walks to get some things done. But that was one of the things that was escalated to my attention, and I saw the pictures and I hit the roof. And it was partly because of the contractor that went belly up and just left, left things hanging. And then also, another contractor, in my view, misbehaved, which I took care of. And so I believe we're on the right track now to get all that resolved.
Doug, is Frontier associated with MediaCom?
No.
Okay, they're separate entities, completely.
Yes, we're the phone company. We're the ILEC. It was Verizon before, it was Frontier, it was Pac Bell, and all, so we've been around since dirt. It's just been different names of the company. About 10, 12 years or so ago, Frontier purchased the Verizon wireline business, and so now it's Frontier.
Thank you, Doug.
Sure.
Let's have a question on, how's it brought into the central office?
It's feeder lines. We have those already, that are already to the central office. Usually with conduit that already exists, because we already have other fiber, I mean, other, you know, copper and stuff that's going through there, probably in some cases for 100 years. I mean, we've been here since dirt and such. And once it gets to the front office, then from there, it goes out to hubs, to outside the neighborhoods. And then once it's outside a neighborhood, it goes to the terminals that are about, each terminal handles four to eight homes, in front of the homes. And one of the things we want, we work with, and we have with the city as well, is, well, where do those hubs go? Because we don't want them, you know, they're above the ground, we don't want them in somebody's front yard that they're looking out their front window and seeing it. So we're very focused on making sure we get that part right as well. But it starts at the central office, well, once, the part that goes, the city starts at the central office and moves out, and that's where you see all those lines. There's feeder lines, and then there's distribution lines.
Okay, I was just curious, as to whether there's hard line coming in from outside of the city, like through ground, or is it coming in through antenna type?
I believe it is underground to get to the central office, but I honestly don't know for sure. There's three ways, three ways. There's aerial, which is on existing poles. And so we're co-owners of those. And so it can be aerial, which it may be in this case, I don't know for sure. If not that, it's underground and conduit. But there's not the wireless capability. We don't, this is solid.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot, but thank you for sharing your previous history stories. I understand how you can understand how the seats are up here. I just wanna commend you. I don't think people understand the difference between copper and fiber, and just how dramatic a difference it is. I know that we've had a longstanding, formerly Verizon copper infrastructure. As a business owner, I experienced that experience. So I think seeing the infrastructure upgraded from the copper to the fiber is great for our community in the long run. Thank you for servicing it. And I have confidence, thank you for coming and presenting, and that we'll continue to move forward.
It's my pleasure. I love doing this because it feels like I can, you understand what's going on here. The copper itself is not resilient, it gets wet, it stops working, and then it slows down too many people. You try to watch the game as though it's everybody else, and you'd get all kinds of picklization and buffering. You're not gonna find that with the fiber at all.
Copper, as I would say, would be the old way, and fiber is, copper was before internet, and fiber is after internet.
140-year-old technology is about time we got to, you know, I'm looking for my flying car frankly. By now, we're supposed to have that, but right now, I'll take fiber.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Again, I'm assuming you're on the digital 395 network, right, that comes into, does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think that's part of the network there at that point. But I can't say that definitively.
No, that's okay. I'm not trying to, yeah, that's the backbone. Are you, what, since we just had Race come at your heels, putting a lot of stuff through town, I'm sure you're aware painfully. Were you able to reuse some of those, some of the distribution, the neighborhood distribution centers? And how much extra hardware is going in, like those extra 5,000 homes, you said?
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, are you working to minimize the impact to the community forward?
Oh, trust me, after what you've been through so far with the coils and all those kinds of things, I have actually been able to use this to hammer home to those above me, the importance of doing it right the first time, and management of contractors. And we are currently, as we speak, what's called a CM3, which is our, not investigator, our inspectors, should be investigators too. They are currently, as we speak, being retrained. Their job is to see to it, it's done right the first time. Things like, if it was designed to go under a sidewalk, why the heck are they in the street? Should not have happened. And there's a whole process that goes through with that, that includes your city, has to be notified about that as well. So this experience has been painful for everyone, but from the standpoint of going forward, it should be a much better experience going forward with the balance of the build.
Yeah, I think most of the community is happy for the upgrade and for all of the advantages that you mentioned. But the pain has been severe, especially with roads that have been done, and then they're now being, you know, I don't know if you're micro trenching in some areas, or if you have to redo some of the areas that Race has already been in. And I'm assuming that your staff is in constant contact with our Public Works Director?
They are, they are. And Travis has been great too. Very patient with us as well, and help us find solutions. But it's, yeah, we don't have to go back in. Where we've been, we're there. It's just the new areas. And then the whole issue of moratoriumed roads, that one, I think it was Wilson, or whatever road that was, it should never have been cut into. And how that happened, I'm still trying to figure out. But we don't want that to happen again.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the presentation, Doug.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming up to visit with us. And we look forward to seeing the project continue.
I'll probably be back, so I'll talk to you then. Take care.
Fantastic. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Ron, you have his contact information? Okay.
Here, let me hand you some cards.
I could forward it to you really quick. The man's got his business cards. Give him credit. Okay, thank you again, sir. Next item on our calendar is public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comment, but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not act on any item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Any speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there any public comment from the floor?
Good evening, Council. Tom Wicknick. Okay, now that Placer AI has been approved, and apparently we'll probably start using it here in the near future. In the interest of transparency and understanding, I have some questions that I would like to ask, and I would hope somebody gets back to me with some answers to the questions. But my concern is, again, is about the privacy of the data that will be gathered, and the transparency that the city will use in informing the public how Placer AI is being used. And contrary to some discussion, when Placer AI gave a presentation here, and there was questions allowed to Placer AI, somebody came up here and said, "Placer AI, can you tell me what AI means?" And the gentleman on the phone, or in the video from Placer AI, said, "Artificial intelligence." Well, now it seems like there's been concerted effort to try and change the definition of Placer AI, to analytical information or something like that, where Placer AI themselves said it was artificial intelligence. I think that's misleading for anybody on the city to try and change what Placer AI means. Now, to the questions. Again, I'm worried about transparency and how this gets used. And one of the council people up there said that when they were deciding to vote for it, that they said that there wouldn't be any businesses using it. And yet, there was a comment made that, "But we'll make this available to the Realtors, Division of Realtors, the Chamber of Commerce, and things like that." That was an excuse to approve this thing. But yet, it was said the businesses wouldn't be using it. So I don't understand the relationship between the two comments and then the statements. So here's what my 10, I got 10 questions. And these are for making sure that we, the public, know what something that we're paying for is being used and how it's being used. And these aren't in any particular order, but I'll just go down the questions. One, who will have access to the data? Two, will individuals be able to access unsupervised data or actually use Placer AI? Will businesses be able to use the Placer AI? Who will set the surveillance criteria? Who's gonna be in charge of saying, "We're going to surveil this," and what are the criteria, and how will it be used, and how will it be stored? Will the general public have access to this information? Can staff utilize without supervision? In other words, can one person decide they're gonna use Placer AI and do a study without anybody else knowing about it? Not that I don't trust anybody. I'm talking about decency, transparency, and control over something that is going to track us. Will the public be notified when the city is using it? Will there be any statement coming out saying, "We have an event going on, and we will be using Placer AI"? Will individual businesses be surveilled? And this is one that really gets me. Can anybody, can any one person say, "I wanna surveil my business"? Or, "I wanna surveil any other business"? Can one person have that power to get that data without anybody else knowing about it? Will there be a public record of how it does get used in the long run? Will the public be informed via maybe a council meeting? And question number 10, will it be used for any kind of political purposes? Would anybody have access to this information or to gather information through this thing for any kind of political reasons, whether it be campaigns or anything else? Okay, so these are just 10 questions. I've said them slow enough so that we can have them in the so that we can have them in the minutes. And if anybody wants them, wants me to type it up, I will type it up and send it to the city manager and hope I get a response to the 10 questions. Again, this is all in the interest of transparency. If you want us, the people here, to understand how you're using it and that you're not going to use it for anything other than it should be used for, the way you said it will be used, then be transparent about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Senott. You beeped me. You don't want me to speak. The last time you had a meeting, Chip Holloway came in and I made a mistake that I want to correct. I put up a post on Roadrunner395.com titled, You've Been Had, okay? Ridgecrest, You've Been Had, that's the people in Ridgecrest. And the first part of it outlined the conflict of interest that we have with Desert Valley's Federal Credit Union. And I pointed out that Chip Holloway is a board member. He's not a board member. He's the chairman of the board. And for him to come in here and talk to this council and explain to them that the people that come in here during a meeting don't matter because Facebook says so is a bunch of bull. So Chip Holloway, you know, what a creep. So I have a little suggestion for Desert Valley's Federal Credit Union, okay? You're interfering in the people's lives in this community. The peaceful privacy, the anonymity, and your failure to use the city council chambers as a place for the business of the city to be conducted. The business of the city should not be conducted on Facebook. The emergency notifications you sent out didn't go to anybody that wasn't on Facebook. You didn't post anything on the city's website, okay? So you've done a pitiful, pitiful job of informing this community. You tried to hide Placer AI, sneak it in through a committee, you and Councilman Blades, a DOD employee, who we don't even know who, what he does, but he comes in here and tells us, well, I talked to some engineers at China Lake. Some engineers know what Placer AI can do. Well, if they know what Placer AI can do, they should be jumping up and down screaming. Placer AI is scum. They're in a scummy business, human data trafficking, surveillance, GPS tracking, scum. No city government, no federal government, no state government, no county government can be trusted to use this technology. GPS location is the problem. It's for sale. It's for sale. It needs to stop. So you're not going to hear the end of this. You can't be trusted. The three of you can't be trusted. You don't have judgment. You don't have discernment. You don't give a damn about our privacy, our constitutional rights, or our security, our national security. So for you to sit up there and talk like you know what you're talking about and tell us that it's not tracking or that I'm an abject liar, you can just take it and put it where the sun doesn't shine.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Is there any public comment on the phones? I think I hear a son. There's one ringing.
Hello?
Hello, caller, go ahead.
Yeah, how's it going?
Good, sir. Can you please say your name?
Mike.
Please, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm watching on my TV and I see the Ridgecrest City Council.
That's who you're speaking with, sir.
Yeah, I really like that. That's a good thing.
Well, thank you, sir. We'd love to have you down here at a meeting one day.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, it looks like we have another caller. Caller, go ahead.
Hello, this is Ronald Porter.
Go right ahead, sir.
I'm calling number one because the special item on the agenda violates the Brown Act. And it doesn't have enough notice and it doesn't follow an emergency standards. Doesn't give the people the amount of time they're they're required to give so they can investigate and make intelligent comments on it. I know you won't listen to me. You never do. And then I'll go to the second subject. Pacer AI, when it collects that information, they're going to use it for their own benefit as well. They'll sell it. They'll do whatever they want. They can track every, every cell phone, everything that they find out there. They can, even if without names, they can track it back to whoever they want. They can watch you from the time you leave your house to the time you go home. Why do we want to spy on our people and make it and if it's just open, geo-tracking, look what they did in DC between credit card records, the GPS in your car, the GPS on your phone. They can know everything that you do with no secrets or whatever. No privacy. And the really biggest danger part of it, which was acknowledged by Tom, that it can be used for various items that interfere with security. If they can track everyone here that works on the base, and they can find out for whatever reason they did something criminal or something somebody might not like, they can be blackmailed. This is so dangerous. You need to understand it. And how far, anything that's out there will be misused. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And we need to pay attention to say, we don't want the government spying on us. Right now, between our electric meters and our water meters, they know when we take a shower, when we wash clothes. Where does it end? How much do you think the government needs to know about you? And what it really violates is liberty. If they can know everything you do, you have no liberty. The biggest thing you your job is, under a republic, and we're not a democracy, is to protect the individual rights primarily. And if you don't see that as part of this thing, you're not doing your job and you're not following your oath. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment on the phones? I'll give it just a second to clear. Okay, no other calls. Next on our agenda will be our council announcements and direction. And city attorney, can I just have you address the Brown Act concerns quickly?
Frankly, Mayor, I have no idea what the gentleman was talking about. I know we had a supplemental agenda issued by the clerk, providing public with additional information on the item that was already agendized and on the original agenda. And yes, that supplemental agenda was issued and published within the 72-hour period, but it does not, it is not a Brown Act violation. We actually didn't have to do that. It was a courtesy to the public. And so if that is what was being referenced by the gentleman on the phone, there's absolutely no Brown Act violation. Short of that, I don't know what he was talking about.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Is there any other council announcements or direction? I'll go ahead and start with, we'll start with Kyle. Any other council announcements or do you want direction on? No, I don't have anything.
Solomon? We have a town hall meeting on trash. Waste Management is going to be there. The meeting is on September 13th at council chambers at 5:30. So I also want to take this opportunity. I wasn't here for the last meeting, the meeting after the flood we had. So I want to take this opportunity to thank our staff, especially Public Works Director Travis Reed and our police department for a job well done in preventing flooding of our town and taking care of other aspects so that the our town is not damaged by the flood. Thank you very much for your service.
I have no other ones. Doc?
I just want to comment about our previous awards for the life saving of our police department and what a fantastic job that these officers have done. And I'm not much on drugs, but after hearing that, and not just this this time, but numerous times in the past, this is a repeat over and over. And what a wonderful job they're doing. But Narcan keeps coming up and not lacking drugs. I got to say that is that is one that I have to say is in the hands of the right people is a lifesaver. So good, good job to everybody.
Very much so. Doc? Skip?
I do. I, inside I glow when I see that Ridgecrest Finas was involved, a dozen of them, in saving lives. We have such opportunities to take them. Rarely are we given the privilege of saving one. I've been asked about these US 395 safety program stickers. I wanted to announce they're still available for a $3 donation. All the money is used to simply buy more stickers at several places in town. Red Rock Books, TNT Automotive, Warren's Automotive, Lindy, which used to be Praxair, and one more place that I can't remember. Oh, well, my shop. If you would like to have one of these edgy, slightly edgy, US 395 safety stickers on your vehicle, it says to those who see it, if you're going to go down 395, especially south, slipping behind a ponderous truck, stay right there. You'll get wherever you're headed safely. Let the others go into the wrong lane to pass you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next is our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If common discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered enlisted sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public or to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. There are three consent items that I will now read. First is proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated August 16, 2023. Two is announcement of proclamations prepared for the month of September and scheduled data presentations. Item number three is a resolution of the city council of the city of Ridgecrest to cooperate with the County of Kern, electing to participate in the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs for fiscal years '24, '25, and '26, and authorizing the city manager, Ron Stran, to sign the cooperative agreement. Do is any member of the council wish to have an item pulled?
No.
Hearing none. Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
We're going to go ahead and vote, please, on your slides.
He showed up weird this time.
Yeah. He's not making any other motions, so go ahead. Okay, he's, he's saying it's not working, so we will go to roll call.
Well, there's one of five in there.
That's all right.
Okay. Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Heyman.
Aye.
Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Next on our agenda this evening is our committee reports. We only have one committee report, which would be RACVB. That would be Solomon and Megan.
Yeah, Megan's sick. She won't be here tonight to present.
Okay.
So it's got to fall on you, Solomon.
No, I didn't. I was not told that.
Okay, so we will follow up with that report at a future date.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. We're now cruising along. Next is other committees, boards, or commissions? Anybody have any other other committees, boards, or commissions reports? I know that Quad States is meeting on Friday.
It looks like that's the first time in a while, but they're meeting on Friday.
Tomorrow, I have East Kern, Air Pollution.
And that Kern, East Kern Economic Development is meeting next Thursday? Ron, does that sound right?
I'm not sure.
It's he, I know Megan, it's next Wednesday or Thursday is East Kern Economic.
Oh, I have it.
I have it on my calendar, too. Just don't have it on.
East Kern, I think it's a luncheon next Thursday in Bakersfield, next Thursday.
Anybody else with any other boards, commissions, or reports? No. City manager report?
Yes, just to remind council that we have our appreciation lunch tomorrow at the Kirby Center. Be a lunch acknowledging city staff and volunteers that helped with the response to Tropical Storm Hillary and all the hard work that everybody did to make sure that the city was prepared for what came upon us. So I know that last week, we had Calu EOS in town. Travis and Nerissa drove them around town, showed them our damage. They'll probably be a few weeks out and whether or not our claims will be accepted by the state for reimbursement. But I know we did learn quite a bit from the storm regarding our storm drain system. Travis Reed, our deputy city manager, public works director, will be looking at expanding our sump there at Felspar, doing additional work on the culvert at Norman Bowman, adding some drains and curbing on the road, as well as a study for the Bowman Channel. So we're going to be looking in the future to try and further mitigate any sort of impact on the storm event in town. We did determine that this storm was a thousand-year event. So we're hoping that we'll never see another one of these in our lifetime. But it did give us a lot of information on where we can improve on our storm drain system. This was a fairly rare event where you actually get the opportunity to plan for two days prior to the event coming. So that was fairly beneficial for the city and the community. Travis and his crew did a really good job of clearing out the storm drains, making sure our drain channels were clear. And the community participated. I think we handed out or made available over 6,000 sandbags. So a lot of the community on the east side of town that was affected in the 84 and 08 floods, most of them were prepared. So it minimized the damage that we had in our community. So it was a job well done for everybody. Our communication aspect was very good. We got the information out to the community by Facebook and Instagram and TikTok. And I think that you had to have been hiding under a rock not to really understand what was coming your way. So staff and especially Mr. Mary did a great job and as well as Kyle in helping inform the community of what was coming upon us. And I, and I thank the community for taking it serious because it was a very serious event. And we all came in on the other end. And it's, it's pretty rare to be involved in three significant incidents over four years, starting with earthquakes in 19, COVID in 20, and now our Hillary flood of 23. So I think we did a really good job.
Okay, any, thank you, sir. Any future agenda items?
I don't. But if I can back up, can I ask the city?
I don't, but if I can back up, can I ask the city manager a few questions?
Sure.
Are you open for that, Ron?
Sure.
I have two questions, both related to the storm. I had a lot of questions about Pearson Park and how long that'll be closed.
Well, we're taking the opportunity now to refurbish the park. As you know, it was under probably a foot or two foot of water. It took a considerable amount of time to pump that water out. So right now, we've done some soil sampling. Now, we're going to be tilling some of the areas that were dead previous, that were killed off due to the flood, and then we're going to hydro seed and try and grow that back, as well as fixing the play equipment, some of it that floated away, a lot of the wood chips that are required by law for the kids to play in need to be replaced, as well as painting some of the benches and trimming some of the trees. So while we have it down, we're doing a total refresh of the park. So I would say at least another three to four weeks.
Right on. And thank you for that. And the only other question I had was, I've heard nothing but positivity. The people I talked to, they're very happy with Public Works and the progress they're making on cleaning up the streets, but are we getting close to done with that?
They got to my house today.
Three to five more weeks. Three to five more weeks. So if you can't hear Travis, Travis, it's three to five more weeks, the city will be still going around cleaning up areas. You don't have to come up.
Yeah, they.
Thank you.
Yeah, they had to prioritize what was more important to begin with. So they started with arterials, now they're getting to the neighborhoods.
Any other future agenda items? No? Okay, mayor and council comments? I will go ahead and let Mr. Gorman kick us off.
The crews cleaning up the streets, my first wife stopped and gave them all a hug along Bowman Road, encouraged them, I guess. I think they're doing a fine job. They always get a thumbs up from me. That's it.
Doc?
I have no comments. Thanks.
Solomon?
None.
Mr. Blades?
Nothing.
Okay, well, then I'll take the opportunity to rattle on for a while. I have all sheet. What time is it? 7:15? Okay, see how the clock runs. First, let me go ahead and reiterate what Councilman Rajaratnam said. This weekend is an important weekend for our community. It'll be the 21st year that we have commemorated the events of 9/11 with our parade of 1,000 flags. That will be on the 9th of September at 9:00 AM. All are welcome. Really, I do mean that. If you want to watch them, come out and watch. If you want to walk, come out and walk. I promise you, there's a place for everyone in our community. Absolutely. Anybody who loves our community, wants to be a part of it, we welcome you there. We'd love to have you be a part of it. We also have a candlelight vigil that on the night of September 11th at 7:00 PM at the gazebo, Captain Vaughn will be speaking there, as well as one of our local fire battalion chiefs. And it's a great opportunity to hear, just again, to remember on that night at sunset, everyone's lives who were changed 22 years ago. The Trash Town Hall was reiterated. That is again on the 13th of September, 5:30 PM. We'll be talking a lot about sorting. We'll be talking a lot about what should be in what cans, what can't be in what cans, and hopefully, again, raising the level of education and understanding. I want to invite everyone just outside of town. Old West Days is in Ransburg on the 16th of September. It's another very fun event. If you haven't been out to Ransburg in a while, it's a great day to go out there and just walk the streets and try not to get shot by a sheriff or something to that effect. But it's a very nice, fun day out, and hopefully, the September weather will be fantastic.
Mayor, I'll add to that, too. Our transit department is providing transportation to and from Ridgecrest or Ransburg that day.
Look at that.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. If you're not, if you don't have a direct way to travel, the city transit will be providing that. I want to congratulate Saracosa College on their 50th anniversary. They have some events coming up in celebration of that. Thank you for the 50 years of service to our community and educating our youth. And then finally, I want to go ahead and reiterate again what everyone has already said about Hurricane, Tropical Storm Hillary. I can't call it Hurricane Hillary because it wasn't a hurricane by the time it got here. But we got what was the equivalent of a year's worth of rain in 24 hours. But I think the key element is exactly what everyone on this dais and our city manager said, which is, we started our communication, we've been focused on improving communication with the community for the last several years, and I think that the proof was positive on that, on this event. You know, the most things I've heard over and over again is, thank you for communicating, thank you for communicating, thank you for communicating, and thank you for communicating. I don't always hear that in this room, but I certainly hear it outside of this room, those two words. But we know that we got the message out, and the 6,000 sandbags that went out is proof positive of we got the message out. The people that had their homes and were protected is proof positive that we got the message out. Everyone who turned to us and said, you know what, I saw my city stand up and work hard for us, is proof that our message got out. Once again, we did our job, and we did it well. So I want to take a moment and thank a few of those people that were really involved in that. We got to present for the gear grinders. Thank you for their assistance in getting vehicles out that were stuck. To our incredible RPD officers and all their work that they did in making sure that people were safe and protected, our public works department, all the work they did. Nobody's giving that department and one Mr. Reed enough credit for a decision made at 1:00 PM in the afternoon that day that I believe saved multiple millions of dollars for this community. But literally, the new Richmond school site was going to be flooded out, and that project would have had to start all over again. That man was aware enough to change it during the interim period between the first dump and the second dump. And he broke the road, and God bless Gold Canyon being broken because it saved this town millions of dollars. Thank you, Travis, and your entire department. To the Kern County Fire Department and all of our community emergency response team, thank you for all that you did in making sure that communication and people and all the resources were there that if somebody did have a problem, we were going to be able to respond. This community showed its resilience once again, incredible resilience. And it shows that one of the most important things about Ridgecrest is how we all serve each other. And our staff, our community, our council, everyone up here, and all the volunteer organizations that I saw out there working, people filling sandbags, people going door to door and checking on people, making sure that businesses were safe, making sure that people had what they needed. All those people make what Ridgecrest is, and it's incredible to see how resilient we were. Once again, we have, as the city manager said, went through three major events in four years, and we're not coming out of it weaker, we're coming out of it stronger. And that's what we should all be remembering and reminding ourselves, is how much strength we have as a community when we are a community. And once again, this was a proud moment for us, a fine moment. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who was involved in August 20th. Tropical Storm Hillary was a memorable one. Last but not least, I just want to go ahead and take a moment, you know, it's a lot of fun up here. It's a lot of fun having your name, your business, you know, all those things dragged through the mud by a few handful of people. It's really entertaining. But you remind yourself that you're the person that's actually trying to improve lives. And I know that for 20 years, I've served proudly this community, proudly, and helped change lives. So whatever you got to say in this room about my business, about me, knock yourself out. I'm done listening. So with that, everyone have a great evening. We'll see you again in two weeks.